Hey, thank you all for joining us today. Our meeting back to order from closed session back in the open session. We have nothing to report out on the closed session. Item B would be pledge of allegiance and trustee Carter, would you lead us in the first?
Absolutely. Pledge of allegiance, do the flag. I have the American flag. It is a pledge of allegiance. We should stand on the nation. If our religion is Christian.
Hey. This time, the public may address the board of trustees on any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board that is not on the agenda. Public may address the board of trustees on each of the agenda items as those items are considered. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of five minutes per topic. Twenty minutes shall be the maximum time allotment for public speakers on any one subject, regardless of the number of speakers at any one board meeting. At the discretion of the majority of the board, these times may be extended. Each person who addresses the board must first be recognized by the presiding officer. Comments must be addressed to the board as a whole and not to individual members or district employees. The board and staff are not obligated to comment on or respond to or address comments by the public. At the opening of this meeting, names and agenda items were taken for public comments. Are there any additional members of the public who wish to make comments? To the board, please state your name and items that you wish to have addressed. And contact staff in the back and then we will bring them forward. Trustee Corgans, we have three individuals. I like the wish to. Very good. Thank you. So Isabel Castaneda. And Anthony Gonzalez. You're on.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Anthony Gonzalez. Learning, integrity, wellness, diversity, community, sustainability. And at the bottom of all of that, students first. We affirm focus on our students and their success. Integrity. We continue to develop and follow an ethical and moral consciousness, which places the collective well-being and health above itself. These are some of the things that you will read when looking through BC's missions, visions and values. February 16th, 2003, at the time between 10:50 to 11:00 a.m. A Bakersfield College safety officer pulled a knife out at me and said, do you know why I don't like using a gun? Because I like to get up close and personal. I like to feel it. He then proceeded to collapse his pocket knife and press it into my stomach in a stabbing motion. After the incident, I drove home that day as I was stripped away from all feelings of safety. Completely blindsided that a Bakersfield College staff employee was so easily threatening a student's life. After the incident, I was hesitant to tell anyone, including my mom, as I didn't want her to worry for my safety and for hers on campus. On February 17th, I emailed the dean of students, the executive director of college safety, human resources manager and the vice chancellor of HR, telling them about what happened. The HR manager scheduled a meeting for us to meet and discuss the incident. During the discussion, she took down my statements and promised me that I would I would be provided with resources. For over two months, I was not provided with any resources or even an update to the situation. Also during the time, no one else that was included in the email bothered to respond to me, not even the dean of students. I spent two months feeling extremely unsafe and emotional distress and suffering from anxiety. Bakersfield College had been my home for over 15 years. I grew up on its campus. From being a child in the Child Development Center to volunteering my summers at Bridge to BC, attending football games, basketball and soccer, and even helping campaign for Measure J. On April 21st, I received an email from HR. I was hoping that I was finally going to be able to get the resources I was promised. Instead, I found out that Bakersfield College staff member that could so easily threaten my life would be returning to work, whose very job is to make the campus feel safe. Bakersfield College no longer felt like a home. My anxiety went to an all-time high as I was trying desperately in my mind to figure out why they would let such a threat back onto campus. I wasn't able to focus on schoolwork since I had no longer felt safe on campus or anywhere as a matter of fact. Another 10 days went by. BC has still failed to provide me with any resources or a sense of safety. Then finally, the dean of students reached out to me. At first, I declined his offer to meet, but then I reconsidered because I know how it feels to be unheard. As I met with Dr. Nikki Demania, I quickly realized that he was not interested in what I had to say or my safety. I was merely there for him to ask for him to ask me if I would be filing a civil suit. At that moment, it had come to me the sad understanding of that just how many of the Bakersfield College staff employees are not student orientated. I find it absolutely concerning that the message that was being sent to staff employees was that they're allowed to threaten students' lives and then take a few months off, then be able to return to work. For the past two and a half months, I haven't even felt safe in my own home. Bakersfield College has failed to uphold their mission or values and the safety of everyone on campus. Board members, I ask that you please take my safety concern extremely serious. This type of behavior should not be tolerated.
Thank you for your comments. Did you have any?
Hi there, everyone. My name is Isabel Castaneda. I have been in a Bakersfield College employee for over 15 years. As you heard, Anthony Gonzalez is my son. When I first heard of this, I was completely shocked. I felt like I got punched in the stomach, knowing that one of my peers at BC would threaten a student and let alone my own child. A child that I raised at BC has ran the halls, has found, has tabled multiple events. And for him to say, Mom, I didn't want to tell you because I didn't want you to feel scared at work or scared for my safety. For the past two months, I've shown up to work every day checking and making sure that I'm not alone in a building. And when I heard that this employee was going to be back on campus, my mind was just blown. My joy to coming to work every day was completely sapped. If anyone knows me, they know that I love Bakersfield College. I love helping students. And I felt like I couldn't speak because I was, this was my child and there was an investigation going on. I spoke with upper management. They said advocate. If it was any other student, you would be knocking down walls. So I'm here today to let you know what we are going through as an institution. I am going to see my child graduate tomorrow. And then there's a shadow of sadness that this is happening to a child of mine that's going to be at BC for another year and a half. For him to say, Mom, I don't feel safe on campus. Mom, I don't feel safe for you. That shouldn't happen to any of us and to any other student on campus. So I plead to you to please look and see what is lacking, what resources, what is happening, what type of training is going on at BC that a public safety officer can so bluntly threaten a student's life? That is not okay. I would never as a PC employee think it's okay to threaten any of my students. We are here to ensure student success. We're here to make sure that students graduate, that we have no barriers. And safety barrier is the worst. Not feeling secure on campus. We do everything to ensure their safety and to remove obstacles, but safety shouldn't be one. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Giovanni Ramirez.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Giovanni Ramirez. I am here to speak on this assault of the BC student. I'm a Bakersfield College student myself, and I have been here for one year. And I have loved my experience so far until I heard this event. This assault was committed by a BC public safety officer. And I am astonished and absolutely disappointed that this had to come to the board. I have found out that other employees have been terminated for less. There's imperative that this officer is relieved from his duties indefinitely and immediately. If the roles were reversed, say a student were to assault an employee, we know that that student would be expelled almost immediately. I ask of you, please do the right thing. Terminate this officer. This student has suffered and this campus has done nothing but give this officer a suspension, which is the equivalence of a slap on the wrist. Bakersfield College has failed at supporting the environment and sense of safety at my school. I will be volunteering at DCW Bridge this summer, and I do not want to have to bring new students in with the stain of violence and disrespect from employees. Please do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board at this time? Hearing none, we will move on in the agenda. I will move to item six preliminary items. For consent, approval for consent items, business services, agendas, item AE, eight A through eight E, business services, construction agendas, 10A to 100. Educational services, agenda items, 12A through 12D. Human resources agendas, items 13A through 13B. Is there a motion? Motion to approve. Or motions or second?
Second.
Number of seconds. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All favor the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Item B, approval of the minutes of previous meeting. Is there a motion to accept or amend? I have a motion to accept. Have a second. Any discussion? All favor the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Correspondence to the board of trustees or communications?
We have not received any correspondence or communication.
It's true. Okay. We have item D, the second reading and approval of a proposed revision of the current committee college district board policy manual, chapter four, academic affairs and chapter five student services. Trustees have reviewed this. Is there a motion to accept the second reading? I have a motion. Is there a second? Second. Any discussion on this item? All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move to item E, announcement of the current committee college district, Dr. Jack Hernandez's award.
Trustee Corgans, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Data Boy, Dr. Reggie Williams, and Dr. Claudia Beeb. We will be announcing today the 2023 current community college district, Dr. Dr. Jack Hernandez's, Ernest Award recipients.
Thank you, Chancellor. Hello, trustees. The Jack Hernandez Pronesis Award is an annual district-wide award that honors any member of the district, faculty, staff or administrators who exemplify what the ancient Greeks called prunisus. Prunisus is the Greek word that means practical wisdom. And the mark of practical wisdom is using one's academic training. And the mark of practical wisdom is using one's academic training and skills beyond the wall of academia. And beyond the wall of the ivory tower. Practical wisdom was a characteristic of this award's namesake, Jack Hernandez. Who exemplified practical wisdom throughout his life. Through his dedication to practical wisdom, Jack left behind a monumental legacy. For our students and for our community. His infectious passion for literature and the humanities. Inspired generations of students, including Reggie Williams. Who took Jack's Intro to Philosophy course when he was a student at Bakersfield College. And now continues his legacy as the current director of the Levin Center. I will turn over the mic to Reggie.
Hear me? Okay. Thanks, Zach. Good afternoon. It's an honor to speak in front of all of you. Thank you so much for having me. Um, as I've said, I'm Reggie Williams. I'm a philosophy professor at Bakersfield College, and I'm also the director of the Norman Levin Center for the Humanities, also at Bakersfield College. I'm here to introduce the Jack Hernandez Pernesis Award. The Jack Hernandez Pernesis Award is an annual district-wide honor that honors any member of the district, faculty, staff, or administrator. Who exemplifies what the ancient Greeks called Pernesis. The Greek word Pernesis means practical wisdom, and the the mark of it is making a distinctive contribution in your community. That uses your academic training. So the the idea is to take what we're trained to do. In the classroom, on the job, but translated outside of the job into the community to the benefit and betterment of the community. Jack, as Zav said, did this in numerous ways. Um, he published literally hundreds of op ed articles, op ed pieces and columns. Uh, for the Californian and for other newspapers. He spoke at public events across the community. Um, he also led reading groups in the community that were not part of the college and so forth. So he epitomized this concept. Um, this year's recipient similarly epitomizes the concept. And to introduce that recipient, I am honored to introduce the president of Porterville College, Dr. Claudia Habib.
Thank you. So as part of the committee, um, it is with honor that I was assigned to make the announcement. So it's a, I have an honor and a great pleasure to announce that the twenty twenty-three Jack Hernandez Pernesis Award recipient. Is Michael Carley, Director of Institutional Research at Porterville College. And Michael, he's here in the room. We will have an opportunity to read the entire bio uh, when uh, the award takes place in September. But allow me to share briefly just a, an excerpt of the nomination form. Michael Carley has an M A in sociology from Stanford University. Uh, his research interests and experience have enriched B C's conversations around student performance gap. His understanding of these issues and his level of empathy transcended data and numbers he provides. Since twenty eleven, Michael has written twenty-one research briefs about important topics like T C first generation college students. Factors contributing to student success, the merits of civic engagement for Porterville College students. And gender differences in student success, to name a few. As a researcher, Michael is the behind-the-scenes force who supports campus and district efforts. To improve the success of our students. He's smart and sensitive. He contributes to our awareness and always remind us of the imperative of helping first-generation underserved students. So congratulations, Michael.
Trustees, in our career, we come across a few rare leaders that influence our profession. As much as this one very special individual whom I'm about to speak about. This individual was a faculty member at Bakersfield College and quickly became a department chair. A faculty leader, a dean, and then went on to a variety of different higher echelon. Higher education positions that have impacted the practice at a host of different colleges. And statewide and now nationally. This is a rare leader whose practical wisdom influenced outreach throughout our communities. Expanding educational pathways, demystifying the academic journey for our students. And ensuring college completion everywhere. She is a rare communicator. Who collaborated with statewide and national colleagues. To refine, enhance, and implement complex concepts such as guided pathways. Multiple measures for placement, dual enrollment, completion. And then baccalaureate degree completion through clear articulated transfer pathways. That students knew and would be able to complete. A leader such as this is clearly worthy of a special practical wisdom award. The legacy she has created is noteworthy. The fact that she was very close to Jack Hernandez and admired. The Pernesis that he exemplified is special. She's our very own outgoing Kern Community College Chancellor. Who is our incoming Community College statewide chancellor, and this makes it even more special. Our Pernesis Award Committee is proud to announce a special one-time legacy award. Is Sonia Christian. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move to item seven, Business Services Approval. Authorization, uh, A is authorization for the Chief Financial Officer to approve a software and support agreement between. Kern Community College District and Still International Corp, S H I International Corp. For Falcon Crowd Strike, the term is from July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Cost to the district shall not exceed one hundred ninety thousand, one hundred forty-eight dollars and seventeen cents. Be paid by, from G U double O one unrestricted funds. There are motions. Of motions or second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? All favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B, Authorization for the Chief Financial Officer to enter into an agreement between the Kern Community College District on behalf of Bakersfield College. And Educational Solutions Enterprises to purchase automotive laboratory equipment for training and advanced. Technical training and hybrid electric vehicle and traditional vehicles under a cooperative agreement, P E P P M multi-state contract. Term is for one hundred eighty days following execution of the agreement. The cost to the district is two hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Be paid from R P six one three restricted fund program. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Your motion, second? Second, any discussion? All favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Item C has been removed from the agenda, and we are moving to item D. Approval of a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Kern Community College District authorizing the issuance of Kern Community College. District Facilities Improvement District Number One, Kern, San Bernardino, Flaherty Counties, California. Election of twenty sixteen general obligation bonds, series E and actions related thereto. This is a roll call vote. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to state first that the Board and Finance and Audit Subcommittee reviewed the need. For the next issuance of the Measure J bond for the primary purpose of paying the band note. Subcommittee recommends.
Motion to approve?
Yeah.
I have that motion. Is there a second? Second, any discussion? Uh, roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Item E, Authorization for the Chief Financial Officer to designate forty million, two hundred and six thousand, five hundred dollars. Of faculty salary expenditures in the G U double O one unrestricted fund. To be paid from revenues received from the Education Protection Account. Designated EPA, interesting designation. And accordance with the Proposition Thirty, the Schools and Local Public Safety Protection Act of twenty twelve. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? All favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. That, we're going to move to item F. Approval of the appointment of new members to serve on the Kern Community College District Measure G and Measure J Bond Oversight Committee. Is there a motion to approve?
Aye.
Second, thank you. All favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight is consent. We will move to item nine A, which is approval of construction items. A, Authorization for the Chief Financial Officer to execute an independent consultant agreement between the Kern Community College District on behalf of Bakersfield College. And A M Tech Inspection Services for the Bakersfield College Agricultural Building Project. Term is from May twelve, twenty twenty-three through May nine, twenty twenty-five. Cost to the district is not to exceed two hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred dollars to be paid from M J one hundred local capital outlay fund. Is there a motion to approve? The motion is our second. Second, in discussion. All favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B, Authorization for the Chief Financial Officer to execute a construction agreement between the Kern Community College District. On behalf of Bakersfield College and Otis Elevator Company for the Wild Center Institute. S M S R twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two passenger and freight elevator upgrades project. Term is from May fifteen, twenty twenty-three through February twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four. Cost to the district is not to exceed four hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars to be paid from C D one hundred state scheduled maintenance fund. Is there a motion to approve? Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item C is Authorization for the Chief Financial Officer to execute a construction agreement. Between the Kern Community College District on behalf of Bakersfield College. And Black Hall Construction for the Bakersfield College S M S R twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two window replacement multiple buildings project. Term is from May fifteen, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Cost to the district is not to exceed one million, six hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and six dollars to be paid from C D one hundred. State Scheduled Maintenance Fund and M J one hundred local capital outlay fund. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you. We'll move to item D, Authorization for the Chief Financial Officer to execute an equipment purchase between the Kern Community College District. On behalf of Bakersfield College and Dell N A S P O Computer Equipment P A. For the Delano L R C multipurpose building. Term is from May fifteen, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Cost to the district is not to exceed two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and twelve cents. To be paid from M J one hundred local, local capital outlay funds. Is there a motion to approve? Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We move to eleven A. Educational Services Approval. Approval of the, item A, Approval of the Attached Curriculum Reports of Courses, Programs, Certificates, and New Community Services Education Course Offerings. As part of the district curriculum for Bakersfield College, Saracosa Community College, and Porterville College. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? A motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Item B, Authorization for the Chief Financial Officer to execute a subscription order. Form between the Kern Community College District on behalf of Bakersfield College and Campus Logic Lucian Company L P. To provide the service of student forums and campus communicator with insights. The term of the agreement is from February one, twenty twenty-three through January thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. The cost to the district is not to exceed four hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars to be paid by, from R P four hundred. B F A P Restricted Fund. Is there a motion to approve? The motion is our second.
Second.
Have a motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item C. Authorization for the Chief Financial Officer to renew a grant agreement between the Kern Community College District on behalf. Of Bakersfield College and Saracosa Community College for the rehabilitative investment grants for healing and transformation, right grant. The term is from March twenty-three, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. The amount payable to the district is four hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. To be deposited into R P one one nine restricted program grant fund. Is there a motion to approve? Motion and second. All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Move to item D. Authorization for the Chief Financial Officer to execute four amendments to agreement between the Kern Community College District. As the Community Economic Resilience Fund, C E R F. Fiscal Agent and the Joint Regional Convener of Kern Coalition, Kern Ennio Manio. Central Label Council, Central Labor Council. Community Action Partnership of Kern, Building Health Communities Kern. And Better Bakersfield and Boundless Kern for the SERF Planning Phase One Grant. To support regional convener, coordination, coordinators, and inclusive economic development that lead to good quality jobs. Term is from March sixth, twenty twenty-three through September thirty, twenty twenty-four. Cost to the district is six hundred and forty thousand to be paid from R P six seventeen SERF Community Economic Resilience Fund. Motion to approve? The motion to approve is our second. Have a second. Any discussion? All favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item E, Authorization for the Chief Financial Officer to execute amendment number one. Between Kern Community District and Worldwind and Sower. The amendment changes company name from Worldwind and Sower to Peer Services LLC. And provides for more hours of training from subject matter experience, experts. Term of the agreement extended from and the ending date of May twenty-two, twenty twenty-three to December fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Cost to the district increases by fifty thousand dollars from two hundred and twenty-five thousand to two seventy-five thousand. To be paid from C E double O five unrestricted funds. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Move to item F. Approval of out-of-state travel for Bakersfield College students to participate in the U N L B College Rodeo Competition. Rodeo Club has qualified for the college rodeo finals and will attend to compete. On behalf of Bakersfield College on May eleventh, twenty twenty-three, through May fourteenth, twenty twenty-three in Las Vegas. I hope they're already there. There is no cost to the district. Is there a motion to approve? Have a motion and a second. All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We will move to Committee Ad-Hoc Committee Reports, Board Finance and Audit Committee Report. Trustee, may.
Yes, the Board Finance and Audit Subcommittee met on April twenty-sixth. The items covered included the Measure J Bond Issuance, C O P Portfolio Results. Porterville College Requests for Use of Reserves. Need time. Twenty-one, twenty-two carry forward calculation in.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. Item B is the Student Success and Equity Committee Report. Trustee Carter?
We met um, on Monday, May eighth. Uh, things covered include. Uh, committee charge, student centered funding formula, formula and student request allocation. How it targets impacting.
Very good. Any questions or comments? And we will move to reports, faculty reports. Excuse me, facility reports. Sorry, then I'll go to the faculty. Sorry. Facility reports, that's attached. Any discussions, questions? Now we'll go to faculty reports. Should've just had you come up anyway.
Good afternoon, board members, Chancellor Burke. I'm Porterville College's academic senate president, Robert Simpkins. I'm here to deliver my final report in this capacity to the board of trustees due to our constitutional term limits. I will be ending my tenure as academic senate president, so I'm pleased to share some final thoughts as I depart from this role. First, I want to share with you that on April fourteenth, I was able to organize with the assistance of the district office, chancellor Christian. The Office of Educational Services and our vice chancellor Gregory Anderson. The Teaching and Learning Exchange Festival that brought a group of faculty, staff, all employee categories together at Bakersfield College. For a day of discussion of sharing ideas of innovation, of making connections in relation to the support of guide dependent ways to live for. To ensure learning. And we had a group of twenty-two people from Porterville College, very proud, maybe the biggest group from Porterville that in my experience coming down here to Bakersfield. To meet and connect with our colleagues district-wide. It was a lot of energy, a lot of, I think even fun and great experience for everyone. And I want to thank the district office for helping support that effort. At Porterville College itself, on April twenty-eighth. This microphone is very touchy. On April twenty-eighth, the academic senate organized its second distinguished student award ceremony, in which we recognized students from all different areas of the college for their outstanding scholarship and service to the college. And we had twenty students on hand, we had faculty giving speeches on their behalf, recognizing them in front of their friends and families and giving the opportunity to explain to them. The impact that students make on us and to share then to remind them that in addition to their time in the classroom, they make a lasting impact on us and the work that we do. And the report has a list of all the students recognized, by the way. And finally, as I depart my role, I wanted to. Introduce to you all my successor, our president-elect Rebecca Baird. Right here with me. And at the next board meeting, then she will be in this role. Then she and I worked closely together in her entire time at Royal College. She was hired the year after me, yes. And we happen to have offices across the hall from each other, so we've worked together closely over the years. And very excited for her to be taking on this role. She has been with the senate for many years. She has been part of our C C A representation. And she's well prepared to assume the role, and I wanted to make sure that you all had a chance to see her and be introduced to her before she just comes walking up and giving a report next year. She will officially take over for me. After commencement tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Classified reports.
Hi, everybody, trustees and chancellor Burke. I'm not Tom Crow, Matt Crow. I am Ann Tatum from Bakersfield College, the campus chair and negotiator there, and Matt just asked me to fill in and have a very short report for you. We didn't quite finish with our negotiations, but we are meeting one more time and we're looking forward to finishing. And that will be in June and we've really enjoyed the process and so we want to continue with I B B, of course, and. Stay with the same team and that's all I have today.
Thank you. Management Association reports. Was another classified? Excuse me, I've got one more classified. We're not in a giant hurry, so you're fine.
I'll try to be quick.
You're fine.
Thank you, guys. I always forget to say this, but my name is Chris Glazer and I'm the president for C S C A Chapter three-three-six for Bakersfield College and the district office. I always just start and go right into my quick report. Thank you, trustees, vice president Corkins, vice chancellors, and a very special welcome back to interim chancellor Tom Burke. We're looking forward to working with you again in the coming months. Collaboration on negotiations between C S C A and the district continues to move forward. We appreciate the patience and understanding that the district has provided to C S C A. As we get our feet wet, because we have new leadership across all three chapters. So there's going to be a lot more to come with that, but we definitely appreciate your guys' patience and understanding. Classified staff are really incredibly excited this week for Bakersfield College's commencement, which is happening tomorrow at Memorial Stadium. We hope that everybody here and you all will consider taking some time to come out to see, number one, our legendary fireworks show. But more importantly, to see our incredible and amazing students cross the stage. They are really the reason why we do the work that we do, and as always, it truly is students first. I also want to give a special congratulations to the twenty-twenty-three Dr. Jack Hernandez for an assist award recipient, Michael Carley. Let's see, I want to thank. I didn't know very much information about the work that Michael Carley did until. Dr. Claudia Habib, president at Porterville College, gave us some of that insight in the committee that we were working on, and I just want to thank her for that. I think that. Having some of that information was incredibly helpful, so congratulations, Michael. I also want to send a special congratulations to our new, this one-time-only for Nissus legacy award recipient, Dr. Sonia Christian, of course. Our incredible outgoing chancellor. Her special relationship with Jack Hernandez, I think, was the catalyst that really made that award possible and continues to make it possible today. I wanted to wrap up this semester with you guys by reading you just a short part of Dr. Christians' for Nissus Award Report. In which she included an infamous Jack Hernandez quote. Says, we all have an afterlife here on earth, an afterlife of our story is remembered by those who have known us for many years. My life lives on in them. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Management Association reports.
Good afternoon, Blini Distill, president of the Management Association. Chris is always a hard act to follow, so I do want to start by echoing. His call for recognition and congratulations to Dr. Sonya Christian and Michael Carley, who's been an invaluable partner. Throughout my time here and can't think of, you know, anybody more, more deserving, so let's sort of start there. Today, I really would like to talk with you all about the upcoming second annual symposiums being held next week on the Bakersfield College campus. We have some super things planned. Very excited, of course, to hear from Dr. Christian and chancellor Burke. We have a number of breakout sessions that you won't want to miss. We've got Ronnie Habib is going to do one on leveraging trauma-informed workplace strategies. Vice President Dad Russell is going to talk about incorporating leadership styles. Nicole Avina is going to give us some coaching on how to do those real-time Canvas, Canvas studio recordings. Or to support our communication both with our students and with our colleagues. Chad How, vice president, finance Chad How is going to talk about interviewing for your next job. That's really a very important element. A lot of our members want to know, how can I move ahead in my career? What do I need to do next? Should I consider diversifying? Should I go into a different arena? Should I just stay where I'm at? And these are some very important questions he's going to answer. We have Miller, Michelle, and Reagan going to present on the phenomenal partnership between the American Association of University Women and Porterville. To foster leadership and to make, you know, significant progress on their community college initiatives. And executive director Susan Bray will come and talk about the benefits of the American, the Association of California Community College Administrators. Which is a, in association of managers and administrators and provides professional development. Really helps with that pipeline of folks coming up in, in our ecosystem. We're going to have, I want to give some shout-outs to Director Fidel Cablena, the Food Services Director and Chef Joseph Omaya, who's going to give us a spectacular lunch. And best, I've saved the best for last. You, you won't want to miss Ronnie Habib's interactive workshop on joyful and effective leadership. Is going to cover communication, empathy, self-management, social attunement, strategies grounded in the science of positive psychology, emotional intelligence, and mindfulness. It's going to be a fantastic day. We currently have a hundred and sixteen managers registered to attend, which is great. And I, I want to send some thanks to executive leadership who encouraged and made it possible for managers to attend, so I want to thank you for that. But please, please register so that we know that we have enough food for everyone. Lastly, I want to put a plug in, not everybody I'm learning knew knows this, but. Managers who contribute their voluntary ten dollars a month is why we're able to bring this fantastic professional development to the district at no charge. What a terrific return on investment. Last chance to register tomorrow evening, eight P M. Please, please join us. We're looking forward to seeing you. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. College reports.
Yeah, I'd like to start by thanking Dr. Bob. Still here for his service as academic senate president for two years, and he did really, really well, bringing the faculty together, working with administration, so I really appreciate that. And of course, we welcome Dr. Rebecca Baird into the role starting tomorrow. One more time, I'd like to congratulate Michael Carley and kind of apologize because I tricked him into coming here. I really wanted to be here when we made that announcement, so, sorry, Michael. Of course, you have the P C update in your hands with some highlights of the amazing things that are happening at P C, but as you may understand. My head is into graduation tomorrow. That's all I can think about, so I'm going to share just a few numbers about tomorrow. Our graduate head count is slightly higher than last year. It went up from five hundred and twenty-nine students to five hundred and fifty-one students. And this is significant because we have lost enrollment and yet students are graduating, but we're doing something right collectively. The numbers of associate degrees. And, and that is a combination of associate of science, associate of arts, associate transfer degrees is also up from last year from six seventy-eight to seven hundred, slightly higher. We are down, though, on certificates, because, I mean, this is expected. C T is one of, of the areas that suffered the most during the pandemic and we lost a lot of enrollment. But the associate degrees are higher, so I'm very proud of that. And last, I would mention that you may be aware, our enrollments are trending positive for summer and fall and for spring even. So this semester, we're up eighteen percent on F E S. Summer is trending at twenty-six percent higher than last year. And fall is trending twenty-seven percent higher than last year. It's early, we're still enrollment, enrolling students and that those numbers are going to change, but I think this is very positive news. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, vice president Corkins, trustees, chancellor Burke. Taking a page from Bakersfield and President Habib beat me to it. In addition to the report you have, I did want to share some enrollment trends that we're seeing and. Highlight Saracosa's summer and fall enrollment at this point in time. For summer comparison to last year, we're up twenty-six point seven percent. And for fall, we're up twenty-four point six percent. As for graduation, my mind also is spinning around tomorrow's festivities and, and that's what fills our cup, right? That's what it's all about. This is why. So really excited about that, and I will be highlighting all kinds of statistics from that and some pictures in my June report. Thank you.
Vice president Corkin, trustees, chancellor Tom Burke. Thank you for the opportunity of addressing. You have my written report and I'm not going to go over any of that, and I won't even go over many of the enrollment numbers since Sean mentioned some of that already. I want to spend a couple of minutes on some reflections, if you don't mind, with your permission. I want to share a little bit about. The fact that we learn throughout our lives. And learning never stops. Over my last two years, I have learned several things and I want to share some of those with you. Being a college president is not an easy job. At any point in time. It's interesting that just a year ago. We were coming out of the Omricon. Pandemic. We had just stopped talking about COVID. COVID variants, and we had started to come back safely to our college campus. It was an all-hands-on-deck job and everyone was involved in it. The amount of time we were on a telephone call or a Zoom call together, human resources, education services, the presidents, all of our staff. It was a team effort to bring people back. That was just a year ago, and sometimes we forget about that. Over the years, we have learned. New terms, new ways of operating. One of them is being laser-focused. And being relentless. And we have taken those to new heights and we have incorporated them into the way we work. And that has resulted in our record enrollment numbers. Every semester since spring last year, we have been growing in our enrollments and we have set new records. The hundred and ten years of Bakersfield College. Tomorrow, we have a record graduating class. If you remember, a year ago, I was bragging about nearly fourteen hundred students coming to our graduation ceremony. Well, tomorrow. We are close to eighteen hundred who will be going across the stage, having a quick photo opportunity. And I promise you all in about two hours flat. So the culmination of our work is tomorrow. I really hope that many of you will be there, joining us as we cheer on our phenomenal. There that you're an example of. The eighteen hundred students we will be cheering on and sending on to our transfer pathways. I want to thank each and every one of you for entrusting me with this really awesome responsibility. I. Didn't realize that, how hard it was going to be, but it's been a phenomenal opportunity to grow. Thank you for that. I couldn't have done any of this without my fantastic vice presidents, and I want to give a big shout-out to Billy Joe Rice, our vice president of instruction. Imelda Simos Valdez, our vice president of student affairs, and Mike Jackman, who's been two-timing doing the chief financial officer as well as being the vice president of. Finance and Operations at Bakersfield College. Thank you all. All the best.
Thank you. Very good, chancellor report.
Thank you. So this was my first week fully back. I was partially back last. And hit the ground running. I had a board subcommittee on day one. Kind of getting back into the groove. Jennifer actually fetched all of my old furniture at my office and reconstructed my old office. That really made me feel like I was home. So right now, I'd also like to recognize our student trustee. I'm sure Sharaz. And I'd like to thank her for her service, engagement with the board this past year. I don't know if she'll remember this, but I ended the. All the financial responsibilities for the. Thank you. Very pleasant day. Good luck. I also like to recognize trustee Gomez-Hiceburn for her recent election as first vice president to California Community College. Vice President to California Community College Trustees Board. I'd like to also like to congratulate Dr. Mike, Michael Carley, Dr. Sonya Christian, for receiving the Dr. Jack Hernandez for an thesis award. I'd also like to thank Mr. Robert Simkins for his service leading the PC Academic Senate, and welcome, Ms. Rector, I look forward to working with you as the new president. Also, Zap, thank you for your leadership last couple of years leading Bakersfield College. And the news is, I'm looking forward to working with you as the new Deputy Chancellor. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Very good, thank you. Start with trustee report with our student trustee.
Hi, everyone, this is my last meeting. I do want to wish, thank all of you for your leadership. You guys welcomed me when I was scared, I remember trustee Nan Gomez Heitzberg, she gave me the biggest hug, and, sorry, and she, she was just there for me and all of you. I do wish Dr. Sonya Christian the best of luck, do incredible work at Sacramento for all of the community colleges here in California. I'm actually really excited to announce our new 2023-2024 student trustee, Joanna Guzan, she's audience right now. She's a sophomore at BC, and she's a business administration major. I would like to announce that for my 23-24 academic year, I will be transferring to UCLA. Thank you. And I'm excited to, for tomorrow's graduation, a little nervous, but really excited to celebrate with everyone, and I hope to see you all there, thank you.
Just want to echo our college presidents that tomorrow's an exciting day, and I'm looking forward to participating and being in attendance at the graduation ceremony at Seracosa College, so I'm looking forward to a first of many.
Trustee me. Trustee, you're running.
I want to echo some of the contributions, and then I'm getting elected as the Vice President of the Community College League, and she's also under Board of International, you know, of the National Association for Trustees and CEOs, so we have a big voice at the state of national level, so thank you for attending that. And thank you, thank you for our student trustee for your service over the last year, I appreciate it, and I wish you the best in your future. That concludes my report.
Trustee Carter. I just real quickly want to wish everybody who's graduating the best, moving forward through life. Trustee Gomez Heitzberg.
Well, graduation is just the best day. Well, first year of school is really right at the top of the list, too, isn't it? I mean, you have all that energy, but when you get to see the students walk across the stage, that's why we're doing the work, whether we're in an office and doing our act with students, or we're out there on the front line. So thank you all, all of our employees, for supporting students and their success. Graduation is such a big deal, but I do want to say, Porterville College, who I think you were awarded four, you had four recognitions for transfer-level English and transfer-level math, and please communicate to the faculty what an amazing thing that is. Reason you were recognized is because you were one of the first, and you are at 100% of getting our students through English and math, and for Level Math, so thank them for that, and Roz, you are courageous and articulate, and UCLA is lucky to have you.
Very good. Student trustees, what's your major going to be? Political science, good for you. Good, may you come back and serve on this board. Congratulations, and UCLA is an outstanding school. I'm pleased to announce that the Board of Trustees is supporting two presentation proposals to the ACCT Leadership Congress being held in Las Vegas, Nevada, October 9th through 12th, 2023. The two presentations will be facilitated by current community college district trustees Giovanni Emanez and Gomez Heitzberg, and trustee Schreiner, in collaboration with Chancellor Burke. And Chancellor, you want to speak to this a little bit, what that's about?
Actually, I think I'm going to ask Todd, if you can come forward and talk about it a little bit.
Very good.
Nothing like being put right on the spot. So this is something that we've done previously, both at CCLC and ACCT, we try to share with CEOs and board members some of the great work we're doing. So we, these presentations typically focus on specific initiatives that are relevant, not only to us and have helped us move forward as a district, but it's, it's things that we can share with them, and I've participated and helped with these presentations, and often after those presentations, many people will come up and ask even further questions. So I know that there is interest in what we have to offer. Kern is seen as kind of a model district for a lot of things, and so the opportunity for us to kind of share what we're working on, that's really the focus of both of these presentations.
Thank you. With that, I think, listen to the governor's updated budget tomorrow, it's important to us and what's going to happen. We appreciate all your attendance, and congratulations to all those graduating, and thank you, meeting is adjourned.